And there are opportunities for more people to benefit from this great service. Uh, why, why do you need to point it out? Do you think that is really what we can manage?
Yeah, you know, right, so there's, even though, uh, one thing I like about Blueboard is they have a staff that really does a lot of the interfacings. So we don't have to do that because a lot of the other cohorts is just myself and the other three members in my department. But we want to just, this is maybe the second year, and we just wanted to go slow. I tend to want to go fast and big as you know, I'm trying to temper myself. And so I would love to get a hundred people. Uh, it also costs money too, so I'm also watching, watching our, my, my purse. Um, and so we thought if we did another, um, twenty this year, see how it goes and then increase, as we increase allocate, we're able to increase allocations and funding because only can increase the amount. And it's a lot of work too. Um, you know, we, even though, uh, Blueboard does a lot of the coaching, we also were coaching, you know, and rallying new people because it's, it's a lot of work. I mean, it's, uh, they need a lot of encouragement to get through it. So we wanted to just make sure that we think of home more than you before we increase the numbers.
Um, you're gonna choose on me? How is, um, these twenty individuals, how are they gonna be selected? Um, what's that process like?
So we have an in-house posting that's gonna go to all the schools. There's an application process, there's questions they have to give us there. And, um, if we get more than the number, and then we, we go ahead and have the schools decide. And if we have multiples, some schools will have principals in conjunction with our department decide who those folks will be. Um, but we, again, we have enough for twenty, so if we get more than ten for the first, uh, first cohort, we'll just put the remaining in the second.
And you might have said it, uh, where else has this sort of been used in any other districts across?
Oh, my goodness, it's only just around the country. Um, uh, Maryland comes to mind. They actually have, Blueboard actually has deeper partnerships where they're actually, um, able to also get, uh, folks, uh, batch music grades. Um, so there's a lot of, there's a lot happening here that we just kind of go slow, but this, one of our functions, um, and we would partner with HR to, to work with them around this ideal retention and attainment. Um, we don't directly necessarily interface with personnel, HR does. This is a way for us to partner to really try to recruit folks and try to really push them to get that hired at peace. But also there's an opportunity eventually to also look at folks who, like our, some of our, um, administrative assistants, some of our TA's, some of the folks that work for us that would love to get into the classroom, they need that batch music grades first. There's an opportunity to actually use this program in that way. Um, but, but again, we're working with HR because I know they're working on some things right now. We wanted to let them get through that and we're gonna circle back and see if we can add this to that recruiting pipeline.
That's good, and, and what is your involvement with HR that pertains to bringing in world-class talent? What sort of is the equity lens on when we bring in sort of world-class talent as we talk about? Where does equity sort of fall in at before these individuals are being selected and brought to the district?
Can you repeat the question?
Um, it's okay, I'm gonna go on with that. Um, I'm not gonna have you answer that. Um, my last question was, in other districts and, um, other districts that are sort of using this contract, do we see an increase in retention?
Yes, they do have those numbers, they share, we have them many times, they do have those numbers.
Okay.
I didn't bring them with me, but if you, if you want to know more, I can definitely get them.
Absolutely, thank you.
They just actually formed a partnership with Southern New Hampshire University. And, uh, um, and are able to get, like I said, folks with batch music grades and then pushing through for a master's in teaching. So that's what, that's really exciting. And, 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 um, HR is aware because we, we actually created, um, we did a joint meeting with them so that they could hear as well.
Correct, correct, that's good.
Listen, I can see the correlation between the world-class talent, pillar role, but, um, in the accountability measure, could you expand on how, uh, for the student growth and achievement, how it will impact that?
Right, so we, so each of the participants have to complete a reflection. And one of the questions is how is this impacting your instruction? What are you seeing in terms of student achievement and improvement and attendance? So those are some of the feedback that we receive from them. So it's a reflective reflection, they, they share it with us. And, and, uh, like I said, if you would like to see any of that, we're happy to share it.
I would actually appreciate it to see that, thank you.
And really quick as well, because it talks a little bit about sort of retention and helping out with that. I just wanted to know, um, as it pertains to, uh, exit interviews as well, um, what have you sort of seen when looking at the exit interviews from the Equity Office? How sort of those things are being, like, why individuals is leaving, why they're coming in?
So one of the things that I, that, one of the reasons why we love this opportunity and also the one coming up too is, one of the biggest things we saw is one of the biggest barriers is culture, which is what you see across the country. But only because of whether it's just because of how they feel. And so one of the reasons why we're excited about this opportunity is it's another way to really affirm and validate people, make them feel motivated and important and that they're needed and that they're valued, um, and they work. So that we can begin to kind of grow that culture, so. Um, and that's something we could do from our office. And, and that's why we, we actually have a DBI working group, uh, a group that's comprised of folks in my office, the folks in HR Resources. We're gonna resume our meetings to really think about how we can partner with them in doing some of this work. But that's really one of the keys for both of these is really to find ways to validate and affirm. Teachers, teaching is very hard, and it's harder now than ever. How do we really support and motivate folks, um, in a profession that's hard and not necessarily the best paid? Um, and so that's part of this work.
Okay, I have just a quick question so we can move on with the contract. Um, I, are you or any member of your team, and this is probably getting a little bit, kind of to this, but a little bit away from this, are any of you on the, um, the exit interviews for the district? Any member from the team or not?
No.
All right. I just want to tell the district, we need to make sure that the Equity Department is involved with exit interviews. Because there's no reason why they shouldn't be involved with exit interviews. And sort of, we have a lot of equity sort of issues of what I'm hearing when individuals is leaving the district. So I just want to let everyone know, we do need, in fact, the Equity Department a part of exit interviews. So we can sort of view it through an equity lens. Understand that, Mr. Scott and, 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 uh, Mr. Sutherland?
Sir.
Thank you.
Please put your request in writing, we appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Now, for the exit interviews, are those voluntary, uh, for the outgoing?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'm all set. Oh, oh, I'm sorry. That's where we're at. Any other questions? So in the absence of any, any questions, can we?
The only question I have, um, is, I think we already, uh, reached, you know, approach this, but, um, a staff recommendation showing that the contract was already commenced on August eighth. And that's because it was a renewal and we took it over and so effectively it is coming along.
Well, we have a, yeah, we have a, we have an in-house posting, we're waiting for it to get, we haven't done anything. Uh, we originally thought we were gonna have this meeting in August, here for August. And, um, and so my goal had been to start a cohort before school started, because usually there's an orientation. And so we wanted teachers to get on board before they actually started work, because I asked them to work on. And we're just gonna readjust our timeline, so we'll just make, we'll make it work. We haven't done anything, we don't have a cohort.
Any more questions?
Do we have the motion to recommend this call? Motion.
So?
Second.
Second. All in favor? Aye. An absentee, an unpleasant, for instance. So moving on, uh, we have the next one chosen, the Rice Education.
Yes, Rice Education, so that's another, um, work that started with Dr. Muller. And, um, when I came on board, um, we were actually still in the process of completing this platform. And so we worked with Rico Rice, who's the, uh, CEO of the organization, to complete the platform. We also, he was still also owed some funding funds as well. So once he completed the platform, we were able to give him the rest of the money that he had been owed for like eighteen months. Um, so this platform, we ended up having a cohort of, I think, twelve teachers as well. And it's an online three and a half hour training. That, uh, it's like a foundation of equity, touches based on implicit bias, and a couple of other compliance-related topics as well. And we wanted to get feedback from teachers as to how they thought it would work if we actually scaled it up. And again, the, uh, feedback was overwhelmingly positive. People loved it, they felt that, they wanted more actually, because it's pretty surface, right? But, uh, it's like, it's what we want everyone to have, and then of course offer different offerings in a different way throughout the year. So we, this is to actually maintain the platform. The, we already have the content, the program exists, it's a three and a half hour, um, online, um, platform. And we actually manage the coaching, so we usually meet with the people who undergo this. The way we did it last year, we met with them a couple of times a year. In this case, what we, uh, partnered with HR Resources, they want to use this as part of the compliance training. So that every employee that comes into the, um, district will be required to take this training. And then I guess they're gonna eventually work something out with the union to have everyone take this training. So anytime you come into this district, you would have to take this three and a half hour training. It's completely online, there are certificates, there are checkpoints, so you can track people's usage, you can track what they've completed. And then we would have record of everyone taking it. So it's just the beginning of compliance. Uh, this is kind of exciting, because it's just like we've never really had this, to my knowledge. Um, I know the people that've been here longer than I have, but I've never experienced it. So it'll be an exciting opportunity to get people on the same page, especially people we hire newly to understand what the expectation is around equity belonging, um, implicit and unconscious fires, sexual misconduct, et cetera. So this, um, this is for thirty-five-nine-three-nine-point-nine-seven. Initially, it was, I was gonna do it for three years, but I was told that I can't use ESR funding, um, for three years because it ends next year. So for this year, we're gonna do one year, and then I want to bring it back for the next two years using a different funding source. Okay? I just noticed this, I'm not sure who created this beautiful form, but it's very interesting. I could have sworn that at the end I had the right total, but it didn't say. So you see this, the total at the bottom, that eighty-five thousand, was the original three-year total. I need to amend that, it should be thirty-five.
Okay.
All right, so I will fix that and.
I was scared.
And I'm also nervous to make that happen. Oh, this is also another type of, so it's a funds, um, that, the fiscal year is not, um, so it's funds is not selected for either district-based or school-based on this copy.
Okay, I'll fix it. Uh, online it's, it is, but that's interesting, okay. I'll, I'll go ahead and, actually that dot, that dot is, uh.
There's not.
Yeah, the dot in the box.
Yeah, I didn't have to create a link.
I said, I'm, I'm sure it would be, it would be a little.
Yes, yes.
I'll, I'll figure out what it means. I'll highlight it or something later. And then I'll also change the amount at the end. When the, the total is thirty-five-nine-three-nine-point-six-seven, twenty-seven, twenty-eight thousand of it is about, is for the maintenance of the platform. And the seventy-five hundred is, is a module that's missing to make it fully compliant, sexual misconduct. So they're developing that in conjunction with my office, and then we're gonna add that and it'll be ready to go.
Questions? Yeah, um, this, this is for all employees, right, both teachers?
That would be the goal, yes, Scott, that would be the goal.
Um, in terms of the, um, you know, I did, we see, I did review overall good feedback from the Ohio School Board Association, it's, it's headquartered, it's vendor. Um, and I did look at the vendor's services, and I did not see a sexual misconduct, uh, training offered. Uh, is that something that's always to be customized for the district?
Yes, they're customizing it for us, and it gave me a, a discounted rate for even at seventy-five hundred.
Very good.
Because we've been, we've been developing that relationship all year. And, um, my Title IX officer, Dr. Diaz, who we met a couple of days ago, um, she's actually working with them to develop that, that model. She developed their scenarios and provided them with the content we need to have it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, really quick as well, uh, with, with this contract, uh, this is just for sort of people that are coming into the district, right?
The, the, so the contract is for maintenance of the platform, but the program is going to be for compliance training for anyone that comes in new. And then conversations we had with Kerman, um, was work, figuring out a way to work it out with the union so that even existing employees would have to take it.
Aye, okay.
And it's, and it's a total of three and a half hours, and you can do it at your own pace. No one has to interface with you at all.
Any other questions? In the absence of none, can we recommend this for passing?
Motion.
So moved?
Second.
Sir, and all in favor?
Aye.
Are there any absences, any positions, thank you, Dr. O'Neal.
Thank you. And I will make those changes in the chair, I'll get those corrected, let's do tomorrow.
All right, so let's move to the open debate, performance resource partners.
Hello, everyone, Brian Lomay, Director of Facilities and Capital Planning. Of course, I'd like to thank the committee for working this out of travel care, constantly, so I appreciate you looking up on the agenda. Um. Um, this is for, uh, Performance Resource Partners, and, uh, Performance Resource Partners is, um, is currently a PPSD vendor. Um, looking for a contract extension, um, for them for additional scope of work, um, for services. And just a little bit of background, um, Performance Resource Partners, uh, has been involved in the district RP process for a service provider. And, uh, as you're aware, uh, as of eight-one, the district transitioned from Aramark to ABM. And, um, PRP was a critical, liquid, critical role in, um, in both helping of the RP process and also transitional work with the new service provider. Um, and what we're looking at, at doing with this piece is to extend their scope of work, um, for a few months, which will get us into, uh, quarterly reviews, um, for contract compliance. Because we want to make sure that when we're starting the contract, that we're starting this off right, and then we're starting it with, um, performance-based in mind, and that we're adhering to the, what was prevented, uh, presented to us, uh, when ABM first, um, took over, um, in the district. And just to, uh, to add the school readiness, um, that we had, getting the schools prepared for opening schools, and also bringing three new schools online, ABM has gone leaps and bounds to make sure that we were ready to open all PPSD locations to create the same level of care, whether the building was brand-new, whether the building was a hundred years old, to provide clean buildings for everyone to go inside of there, so this way there was equity across the board, all locations. Um, they, they've been a, a great partner to deal, uh, to deal with, and they have one of helping me out to make sure that we're, we're, um, providing the best for our students and staff. And PRP has been an extension for compliance inside of the process. They've been an, an ally to help PPSD on our side to make sure that we are transitioning and that we're getting the dollar value that we're paying for, and making sure that we're adhering to the terms and conditions of the contract. This is new to the district, it's new to, if, we haven't had a contract change in a, in a very long time. So, um, to make sure that we're adhering to this performance-based standard, um, moving forward.
Thank you. First of all.
I actually had a question regarding, um, in the accountability measures, it talks about, uh, spot checks. Um, can you elaborate what these spot checks, uh, what the type of inspections would be done? Um, are they surprise inspections? Uh, will they include safety inspections and so forth?
Yeah, so they're full inspections of the buildings, and this is something that we do as the PPSD facilities team, is to go in and wear an oversight of the ABM contract. So we're performing these checks on our own to go and to make sure that we're having contract compliance. So we're going through the buildings and checking for the same things, so we're looking at that and through the same lens, whether it's through PRP, whether it's through our facilities team or through ABM. Uh, we're going through, we're looking for safety concerns, we're spot checking for consensual, um, concerns, to make sure that they're adhering to the new, um, MAP levels, so we went from MAP three to MAP two, um, to make sure that we're adhering to that on floors, on high dusting, ceilings, windows, and, you know, every, all of the different areas for that. And part of the, the spot checks is to, to pick schools. It doesn't have to be the newest school, it doesn't have to be the oldest school, but, uh, to, to pick schools to make sure that we're going through and make sure that the work is being completed through all district locations, regardless of what, what the school is. The same standard of care is across the board for all of them, all of them. And then part of that too is, um, there will be charge reimbursable work as, as we move forward and we do other additional, uh, projects inside of there. And if we are receiving something that is above and beyond contract price, that we're making sure that we're following up and that we're getting the, the dollar value, you know, that for, um, the money that are being spent. So following up on charge-reimbursal work that could be above and beyond just normal maintenance.
And if I can just add, PRP is, is a critical piece of, like, giving us the guidance and technical support as we, you know, um, implement that new contract with ABM, right? So they're making, they're sort of like spot checking to make sure that it's aligned to the performance-based and that it's within the contract that, um, that ABM was, was hired to do.
And there's also some other caveats that we did not have before, like asset tagging throughout the district. So this way we can know if a piece of equipment has been touched four or five times, we can then make a decision, well, it's beyond being repaired, it's due for replacement. Um, there's also a new work order system that's being implemented throughout the entire district, where, um, staff and schools can now see and have visibility into the work orders that are happening inside of their schools. So this are, these are all firsts for the district and, and helping to have compliance behind all of these. It's just, it's holding a level of accountability to all the money that's being invested.
And what type of penalties for the vendor if, if deemed a non-compliance on any of those items that they're referring to?
So there's financial implications for, um, for them not hitting their markets, performance-based contracts. So you don't perform, you don't pay, that's the way that it works out inside of there. So there are different levels that we can come in, and so right off, right off of that, they have a chance to make good on it and explain themselves. Um, but as we go through the, the process, if they're not delivering, we're not paying, so.
I just.
That's the biggest challenge.
And that's where the quarterly reviews come in.
That's why.
And, you know, we have, we'll be able to provide that.
So we expect that there should be a report in November, because this is a few months or something.
Yes.
There should be a report, so we can tell the district about, sort of, how, from their analysis, all right?
Correct. Analysis, the implementation, and then, you know, we still have to go out for, uh, request for proposal for future, um, quarterly, uh, reviews of the ABM contract in general.
Okay.
But this, this piece is helping us through the guidance and the technical support and making sure that that's being adhered to at the beginning as they transition to the new vendor. So there'll be a report of like, you know, what was, what was found, how is it being implemented? What are the areas that we then need to continue to focus on or turn out in the work around that?
I want, I want to understand this clearly, so after three months, we're gonna do another RFP for another agency that will review the ABM contract?
Independent, in, independent.
Independent.
Review.
Sort of a review. And where does internal audit comes in here? I'd say some, where does internal audit comes in? So you, you're saying that the district is not able to, um, do this compliance check by itself until they pull it out? And, and I have to say something thousand dollars?
No, so, so if I can, you know, as I say, so we are, we audit every day, we're walking and giving feedback to the vendor. Many of these contracts, not just in PPSD, but have an external third party come in, and be kind of a independent entity. But then the, the, ABM is the one who has to reimburse us, so it's not us, we, it hasn't been net, no, no cost to the district because it's part of ABM's contract. Now, ABM is not paying the independent party directly, nor selecting them, we are. But we built it into the contract that the cost to do that comes out of the money we pay ABM. So it's not an additional charge for the authority.
So, so we are not paying for it. They say part of the contract.
Yeah, I would just, I would just add that the previous, the previous vendor had the same type of review work, quality work as well that was built into the contract.
Hmm.
This isn't anything, anything new.
But that doesn't sound us on a daily basis from saying, please don't, I gotta fix it.
So you do your own.
That's where the facilities team comes into play, those were the weekly walkthroughs or bi-weekly walkthroughs, where we do our own internal audit and by what we're seeing. But this is an independent review of our internal audits, so that, you know, it's very clear what those metrics are.
Okay, so it's, um, we'll see what happens, uh, than what Trump used to say. Because now what I'm looking at is this, so it's inbuilt in the, in, in the contract, but another independent agency is doing the service that the contractors are gonna have to pay for. How are we ensuring neutrality and independence in this kind of game? How, how do we get that balance? I mean, can you please educate me on that? I'm an accountant. So, and as a finance person, you are, yeah, somebody's paying for what another agency is not gonna audit. So we might as well know what is gonna be the results.
Okay, so, yeah, if I may.
Go ahead, please, sir.
So the outside, the independent contractor, in which it doesn't know that ABM is going to pay for those services.
Okay.
Right, so it's still an, it's like an independent audit, right? That we have an independent audit look over our books. So it's an independent consulting team that would come in after November or whenever they're selected to do these checks to ensure that they're meeting their contract. The independent audit doesn't know that ABM's paying for it, it's in our contract, we'll say, that it's a.
And, I mean, we are, we're, I mean, we're the ones technically giving, cutting the check to that vendor.
Correct.
As it is, to talk to.
Yes.
So they don't have any say in selecting them.
Hmm, okay.
Yes, we are selecting the vendor, ABM is not selecting the vendor too.
But it gives us some credibility that if we were just saying, you're not, or we're not paying you, then they'd say like, whoa, whoa, we disagree with this. And this, this entity gives us some agreed-upon mechanisms to actually say, here's someone who's coming in and calling, you know, independently telling them what we're doing. Because otherwise they can say, you know, it, it gives us another, another level of all versus, you know, we had the disrepute over there.
And, and the reason why I'm saying this is the fact that we know the fallout from our going to ABM. So we need to draw teams in this. So our work that we're supposed to do, we can't contract it out. And I, I, I respect the team in terms of what you're doing. I'm just appealing that, you know, for us to know, kind of, this, and know that we've not made a wrong decision, we have to have our hands on the debt to make sure that things are done the right way it should be done. So by, by the time we engage and we rely on the analysis of another agent, we're just gonna come who is not operating on a daily basis with us. How do we think the result is going to be? So I'm just, uh, uh, appealing to the district to be up and doing and making sure that we've not made a wrong step. This is seventeen million over seven years, and we know what happened after that happened. But now we need to make sure that, you know, the decision we make was the right decision, and we're gonna do everything to make sure that we have not made a wrong decision.
Yeah, I think this is just another level of, like, safety in terms of validating, right? Like, we have to, as a district, we have the direct oversight of assessing and doing that internal audit to make sure that things are to par and, and the form, and a performance-based contract. So we are doing that accountability, this is just that, that layer of like validating that. And in the event that, you know, there is something that's not going to, according to the contract, now you have an independent person validating that piece and saying, we did that, what we need to do on our end.
All right. Um, are we sure that we don't have the best, so we'll ask you to do that. Any other questions?
Actually, a question I have is regarding, um, contract types as an amendment. Is this tied into the amendment of ABM contract, or is this its own?
No, so PRP is a, is a, a current contract, they're under contract, but, uh, the initial, uh, scope of work that they were hired to do, um, was under the thresholds, which means we didn't need to come to the board. But because we're added, because of the added support and additional scope of work that they're providing between now and then, you know, we, we wired over because it, it did go over the threshold.
And the, and the contract has already commenced on August eighteenth, is that correct?
So it was, and again, the simple situation, we were supposed to have the meeting in August, but like, that scope of work is, is, um, you know, that started in the sense that they haven't done that piece because we needed to make sure that we got.
I have another question.
How, how was this, uh, this vendor pick? What, what kind of process was sort of that? Was the, um, the contract, was it ABM, I believe, were they involved with that process of selecting?
No, so they, ABM came after, that's a good question. So PRP was, the district put out a solicitation in two thousand twenty-two to help us, um, you know, hire a client or vendor that can help us, uh, with the development of the performance-based contract for the integrated facilities management. So PRP was a, um, the sole vendor who, uh, you know, put in a proposal to do that level work. And as a result, they helped us craft the, um, solicitation to, uh, get to ABM.
Right, so we expect that in November we'll be able to get the reports of, um, what they are, we'll be able to find in three months. Do we have a motion? Do you have another question?
I guess I'm just concerned, you know, of the amount of the contract and the short duration of the contract, so. Um, but seeing how we will be getting a report, um, to substantiate this transition that is facility manager. I guess I'm just ambivalent about approving it, uh, because it is a third party. I guess I'm just ambivalent about approving it, uh, because it is a third party. And, you know, spot checks, according to the research that I conducted, are difficult to measure in, um, to quantify, I will.
Some of it too is ABM's organization and like their structure. So part of it is, is making sure that ABM matches what PPSD has. So that's going back to them and saying, do you have the right people in place? Do you have the correct amount of custodians in place? Do you have the right, um, you know, zone managers in place for oversight on the side of there? They're part of contract compliance of our nine-hundred-page contract that we have to be able to go through and, and, and say, is ABM holding up to their end of the bargain? And do they have the right people in place so that this way they're making good on that contract that we have with them? The other thing I might add is in the prior contract, not performance-based, had an apple level through, apple level three, had different levels of service, left types of levels of services than we are having this contract. So there's a learning curve for us to how to actually effectively manage that contract from what, what was done before. So what we don't want to go back to is we have a performance-based contract, but we aren't using it because we haven't built that internal capacity to do that as well. And so having PRP with us, they can help call out things that we, you know, haven't had to do before because we had a different type of contract with our own. So I, that's why I think it's helpful to have that particularly as we are getting up to speed and then as we are trained internally, um, we'll be better equipped to manage the contract. But, you know, this is a, we want to make sure we get this contract with ABM right. And so having outside expertise who have managed these types of contracts for the guidance and trainings is, is helpful.
It said that it will begin eighteenth, has it begun already or not? We may not know what proof.
They're already under, they were already under contract. So what this request for is to expand the scope of it. So, um, the additional scope hasn't fully started. But they were already, their original contract, I forget, is still active. This is just to expand the scope of work. Frankly, because when we originally had them under contract, we weren't sure whether there was going to be a transition. We might have been, we might have stayed with air martin, therefore we wouldn't need someone to help you with the transition. But as you, you know, as we selected a new vendor, a new contract, you know, that's why there is needed now and we might have not expected that.
And it will add November first.
Correct.
Why wouldn't it be offset to when we approve it offset so it has the full length of what the contract is saying? Yep, why wouldn't we offset it? So it says it should, should have began eighteenth, it should be there.
If we, if we shift the dates as a result, who was what I think he's asking?
Correct.
So that we have the same window of.
Oh, 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 oh. Correct.
Yeah, I think that would be, again, they're still under contract. So I think those are, you know, those dates can shift.
Okay.
So what's, what, what, I think we have a reason to make it November first. I think that was.
The reason, the, the, that, the reason for November first was because that's where you want to start your quarterly reviews with, again, with, and we have to go out through to bid and have an independent person or an independent vendor to do that. I think we could still do that and still manage the, the fact that, you know, they're still equipping us with that internal knowledge that we need to be able to ensure that the contract is being, um, performed in the way that it's intended to.
Because I think one of the challenges we had in the ABM versus Aramart is because ABM wanted to start up in August, whereas the Aramart contract is.
Expired.
Expired in November.
Yeah.
So if that is the reason, then if we have to push it forward, um, wouldn't that affect the trajectory of what we're trying to measure?
I don't think so, but our, our team would still be receiving the same services. Like, so our team would be, ABM would still be in contract compliance. Our team would still have the tools that they need to do contract compliance. So there wouldn't be any loss inside of there. And I'm sure the dates would have flexibility, there's no hard stop for, for November first. This was just a contract term for an extension to act as a bridge between now and when quarterly reviews start, but we've still gained, there wouldn't be any loss on, on, on PPSD side.
And I just want to relate that to my colleague's observation about the cost. So we hope that when we have to RF for this in the future, it's not as expensive as this one. So we're, I mean, if we're going to lean towards this, approving this, we're saying that it is because this is the initial stage. It is a cost, this is an infancy stage where nobody, we're just trying to learn. So that in future, after the matter of gain experience and the word of God experience that everything is now stationary and stable, we do not expect to have this kind of expenses over a few months. Is that safe to say?
That is accurate.
Okay. Are you comfortable with that? Alright, so I mean, that, that's what I think will happen, yeah. Yeah, I think, you know, at the initial stage, yeah, let's, that give that opportunity and let's see how it plays out. And if we come back here in November or December, we see, I mean, at seventy thousand, then we're going to have to like come back.
You know, I'd love to see some surety that the first of November could still be the target date for, um, the end date so that we can get the reported that we need.
Yeah.
To make that initial, um, compar, you know, so we have that for future comparisons. So I mean, still better, I'm just worried about that, but if, you know, it's warranted.
And that's why I said I think the dates are flexible because the work, you know, although it hasn't fully started, uh, they've been, you know, they've been preparing for that and understanding with them and helping with the transition piece. So I think that's why, um, it can, we can still hold that date is what I think.
I understand, I just want to make sure that we are actually getting our worth sort of with the contract. But definitely if you think that it would be best to end it on that, that November first, then we have to have that reported.
Yeah, right, okay.
That's, that's very important.
Okay.
Okay, so can we move this to the, uh, we have a motion?
Yes, sir.
So, second, all in favor, any objections, any opposition to that? Thank you. So we want to, first is morning.
Good evening, Sandy Stewart, Chief of Student Support Services. I have the majority of the contracts today. So we have, um, four point three to four point seven. So we're going to keep with the theme tonight and jumping around on you. So we will, right, so I'm going to, I have here Natalie Fleming, she's my Director of Assetial Mental Health, and she will review with you, she also has some chat, chat here. So she will review with you four point five, um, four point six and four point seven, if that's okay. And then I'll take over after that. So Natalie, I'll have you start with your.
Thank you for adjusting. So Natalie Fleming, Director of Assetial Mental Health, the first four point five, Dragonfly Forward. This is a contract for.
So what if not four point five more? Ah, great, okay.
Testing your skills at night, right? See how the brain's working. Okay, so Dragonfly Forward, um, is a consultation company, um, this is for twenty thousand dollars. And this is through our partnership with RIDE and the Project Aware Grant that we've had had since, uh, two thousand and eighteen. And it's focused on building a multi-tier system of support and integrating mental health and social professional, um, systems of support with the academic piece, um, so that we're looking at full titles. This company also contacts with RIDE. And so this is kind of our LEA portion of it where they're consulting with us directly. And they were coming with our district leadership team, our assetal mental health team, um, to help us build out information plan and progress in return of that multi-tier system of mental health and social professional supports. As well as expanding that into our, um, newly formed SCSS district leadership team to create the regulations for the policy that was just approved, approved recently.
Thank you, and first.
Do you have a question? It's my understanding that earlier this year, a four-year grant was awarded to expand mental health awareness in Rhode Island, uh, in all thirty-nine towns and cities. So, uh, is there, you know, I'm very impressed with Project Aware, I think it's fantastic to be able to meet the students where they are with mental health, uh, you know, and keeping abreast of, of those different activities. So do we expect that with that award for four years, that, um, you know, this looks like a short term, um, you know, only through the end of the year? Do we expect it to, uh, you know, extend here?
Yes, so we have three grants right now. So Providence has actually, um, been awarded every single grant that RIDE has received through the US Department of Ed as well as, um, the Subs, uh, Subs Association. So I'm, I'm wondering if the one you're speaking to is the second core part of the school-based mental health. We have the school-based mental health grant as well as a project aware grant, um, within this department. And so that actually through Project Aware and that grant, we are able to really intentionally utilize our budget funding to increase that to about two million dollars across both streams to support mental health. And support helping building out the systems to actually create the conditions for the support student implementation ability. So this is a very small portion of the Project Aware Grant, um, which that one we've had since two thousand and eighteen for five years and that's coming to an end. But we now have extended that with a partnership through Bradley, um, to extend the Project Aware Grant. And then the school-based mental health grant is a separate grant, um, that's more focused on recruitment of school psychologists, social workers, mental health professionals, um, and building that support systems to support teams.
Is that either contract type is same new and also it's an amendment?
Yeah, I'm just.
It should be new. It should be new.
It should be new.
I can put new and then.
Wow, it is, you're right, I think it's the reform.
Yeah, that it was, it's a new one.
It's new.
Yeah, that was just a take over or something, we can take that one. Yeah.
And then, you know, the, a bunch of the staff recommendations were really, really to me. I had to get my innocuous answers though.
And the more you type, the smaller it gets.
Just, anyway, how we could, but if it's any way that we can make that point just to, you know, more, more legible, you know, that would be.
Maybe you collapse.
I'm impressed with this.
It's so small.
Yeah.
We could try to collapse the two lines, it's a fillable form, so the more you type in, it gets trims, but we could try, or even if you put another word and we can just attach it, we can do that.
Yeah, so that's basically, it's just, this is for the consultation for our district mental health team to build out the implementation plans for our school-based teams.
Might not have questions.
Yeah, that's it. So we need to fix this from.
Yes.
Yes.
Change that a minute. Do we have permission to recommend this for transit, so that's enough?
So, no.
Second.
All in favor, any objections, any opposition to that? So we're going to four point seven now?
We're, we're going to go to four point six.
Okay.
Please, yes.
You got me, it's a lot.
Yes. Because we have all this great money, we have a lot of great contracts and bridges and stuff.
Social, school social workers association?
Yes.
Okay, right.
Okay, so this one, um, is SWA, which we always say, I don't know why, um, the Social Worker Association of America. And this is, um, we were able to add thirty-four new school social workers. So we're up to a total of eighty-four.
Wait, how many have stopped there? Did you hear that? We have eighty-four, that's the most we've ever had in our district and we're very excited about that, very, very excited. And the fact that we have eighty-four and the fact that we've been able to hire that many social workers in our district is amazing. So I just want to make sure we highlight that because we're very excited, we have our funds, very excited.
So that actually brings us very close to the nationally recommended ratio of one to fifty. And we've been trying to very intentionally place, um, those additional school social workers to build students' working. So we have, uh, three at every high school, two at every middle school, one, two and a half at every elementary school.
And it's a specialized preschool.
And then we created a school-based preschool team.
I'm so excited about that, yes.
So this portion, so twelve thousand five hundred and fifty-eight dollars, um, is a contract with the School Social Worker Association of America to provide a target of training on the school social work standards. Currently, right now, there's only social work programs, um, and they do not train specifically on how to provide social work in a school setting. So a lot of the new social workers, um, we've created an intern pathway. We have a lot of new social workers coming from the district to, who live in the district, which is awesome, but coming from around college. We had twenty-two social work interns last year, um, twelve of them became social workers this year. So, so what we were finding is a lot of our specialists in the coaching supports is that they're not trained particularly in social education. And then also just how to apply social work within a school setting. So for the purposes of connecting student access and learning and ways of accessing supports in the schools. So we've been looking at one, building internal training and supports, but this is a piece that would give us those additional, um, virtual sessions, um, as well as with the School Social Worker of America specifically of how do I apply that in my school setting? And that can be during PD hours as well, they can access that.
For some of the social workers that did not stay last year, um, and when, you know, had those exit conversations, to your point, you see a little ago, um, you know, we heard a lot of them, you know, well, they've worked prior in a hospital or in other settings and not in schools. And so they had a hard time adjusting. So that was one of the reasons why we put in an actual coaching model, so that way they do feel supported, um, you know, by our more senior social workers here in the district that are out of Natalie's office, out of our assetal mental health office. And so that way we get them needed support. And so we really hope that that will help to also retain, um, these really great, um, hires. Because it's not just hiring, it's also retaining, like keeping them, so.
Another question I have was some.
It's been added as well, so I could just.
There's a variance for justification, spending reflecting eleven, uh, training sessions in the spending breakdown refers to fourteen. Uh, which one's correct?
Eleven. Oh, so that was, so the other piece is the CEUs, let's see what they, okay. So for social workers, they are certified through the Department of Education, but they also have a license through the Department of Health. And so in order to maintain that license, they have to, um, get professional development and most of the time it's paid for that in order to get the CEUs. And so through the school PD, we give PLU, only the acronym.
PLUs.
PLUs, um, but those don't qualify to, they qualify as making a certification group to the Department of Ed, but not their license to the Department of Education. So a lot of times it's, it's part of a recruitment and retention strategy, the social workers, um, the school social workers, school psychologists, the SLPs, um, have to pay to maintain their license. And so this, um, provides fourteen CEUs, um, for taking these trainings that they won't have to pay for. So through this contract, we'll be able to pay for the CEUs, so they don't have to spend extra money in order to maintain their license. So that was the tip. So it's eleven sessions, but you receive fourteen credit CEUs.
Thank you for my question.
Will this program, how many social workers do we now have?
Eighty-four.
Okay, and will, uh, this contract be offered to all of them, that term, or just, how many?
Uh, sixty-nine.
Sixty-nine, alright. Why didn't we sort of put the funding in the, at, at four?
I think at that time, um, we have, we were still onboarding those eight.
Yeah. We hadn't, um, yeah, I don't think they were on, they had been hired yet, so we did it for tall. I wonder if it's something we can just change in that.
Yeah, it's not, for, I mean, we have it, it'll just be to, it's also sometimes just for the effectiveness of, especially virtually. Sometimes then there's like a hundred people on a session, um, and it kind of takes out the personalization of it for you to be able to, um, collaborate, um, ask questions. So it also, I think, commits to their, their sessions, so that.
We could check the attendance on them too, Natalie, if we see that people are not being able to get on, it can be reasonably to get, and check that.
And these, um, some of these eighty-four is from ESSM money, right, for the hires?
Yes.
That's good. What are we going to do when the ESSM money runs up? How are we going to retain these entities?
Great question and love for the advocacy. Um, no, so we, um.
Well, every school has.
You're going to come along with me, yeah, the next week.
No, we, well, every school has student-based budgeting, so, you know, every school will be able to make their own determination for their own decisions. Funny enough, uh, before we added these through ESSR, as you see there, quite a few schools had added themselves, put in their budgets to have, because they knew they needed it. So, um, so I, I strongly feel that, you know, because of the amount of, you know, great work they're going to do this year and the difference, if they're going to be adding that into their budgets.
And I, and I'm definitely happy because I, I definitely am all for getting as much support and help using this ESSM money, or funded I may say, to get as much help to our students as possible. So I want to definitely thank y'all for that. So hopefully we can use a lot of like these other contracts we have, a lot of that hopefully can go towards sort of social and emotional support towards our students. I'm hoping that we can sort of push that even before sort of the money runs out, with all of the money that we have left over. And then, yeah, I'm hoping that we can retain these individuals. It's gonna be tough, we know about that. I'm hoping that we don't have a lot of layoffs next year from all the positions that we're hiring. But we definitely need to find a strategy as soon as possible to try to retain these individuals in other positions as well. Because that's what I'm afraid of after this ESSM money sort of comes out. Good contract for me, I enjoy it.
I can give you like quick, if this is, this could be a whole meeting, but one we did just for that proposal for a full service funding schools grant.
Tell them how much that would be.
Fifty million dollars.
Oh, that's good.
So.
Keep your fingers crossed.
Fingers crossed and some prayers that we were able to try to include in the conference. But as well as resource coordinators across all the schools to connect the neighborhoods with resources. But Medicaid is also a big goal for ours to cover right now too. Because they just passed that we can bill for non-special education students for home services. So there's a lot, opens up a lot of panowarm. We have a lot of work to do, but I think that will be a really good start.
And how long would that, say we was granted it, how long would that be just?
Five.
Five years.
Okay. If I have.
But always looking for sustainable funding, like.
There's also a gap in the, in the local funding on the state side that, you know, you guys mentioned, one million dollars. Double funded for the last many years, so that's certainly something we can advocate for to keep these SCL programs in. So we can, we can get all to like join on board that man, like through social media, get it out there and.
Absolutely.
If there's any specific data that we can make sure we're collecting to support that, please let me know what we can make sure we're.
I was just, I think there's a steep legislation that had gone far along about additional funding, that's all short. So hopefully, you know, we showed what this, this type of investment can do and people at least that we need to go realize that it's worth, you know, sustaining.
Yeah, I forgot about that. But yes, any support with that, it was in the house and I went to study. Because obviously everyone is attached to it, but getting school social workers to ratio for one to fifty.
Which we will be matched.
We're so, we're sending it to the principal sites. Only the, only district and the state currently has that ratio. So that's.
Probably many of you districts too probably with that issue.
Really quick, Mr. Chairman, I just want to say, I really hope that we, like we do both of doing, I hope that we're able to sort of push as much, like I already said, support and funding to the students. Like I said before, this money runs out, that's more of what I am sort of concerned about. I want to make sure these students have some kind of resources, even if it's for the next year. If you guys bring a bunch of contracts to me that's gonna sort of boost our students, our student attendance or their social emotion, like we said, working on Medicaid, whether they need some sort of supplies or whatever it may be. I feel comfortable with approving as many contracts as possible for our students in that area. So I'm really hoping that that's sort of a push within the next couple of months, definitely for this money runs out.
Yeah, you'll be seeing a big boost of them from our office coming through. We've made a lot of games this show. We're really excited. And actually, one of the contracts I'll be sharing with you is, you know, something actually around SCL and, you know, sensory mod. So we'll get to see that in a few minutes.
Okay, awesome. Thank you. Any other question?
One other question they got is the eleven recorded professional development sessions. Does each social worker or all sixty-nine of them have to take all eleven at a time?
No. No, it's, they don't have to take all of them. They're just there to be offered. But they will be, we're hoping that we can maintain them after this contract. And so if people weren't able to manage that, which is why they're pre-recorded, that we can maintain that. And I'll update this information to make sure that it's accurate.
Very good. I have more questions.
We have a motion for a man subject to changing.
Motion.
So, all in favor? Any abstention in the position of the highest? Thank you, Senator. So I'll move back to the president.
Four, four point seven, please, which is the School Neuropsychology Institute. And then we can.
It's me again. It's me again. So this actually we presented last year as well. So this is the school psychologist type side of the coin. Allow, most of these are to build our systems and our competencies of our support professionals. So they provide effective support to the students and access and ready to services and support. So the School Neuropsych Institute, last year we put six school psychologists through. This year we'll put five, which will then allow us to have half of our school psychologists trained in neuropsychological evaluations and culturally and holistically appropriate evaluations. So it's a ten-month program where they go through. It's pretty intense program, but it's weekend. It's like Friday, Saturday, Sunday weekends. So this will be the second cohort cohort. And then they would get certified, become certified as a school neuropsychologist and be able to enhance the level of evaluation and support, particularly around learning disabilities. And really be able to help provide consultation to our social education teams and our additional support staff on how we support students with really targeted interventions and accommodations and classroom accommodations to support students with various learning abilities. And it just really enhances that. Right now, with talking about to a digital learning assessment system at the end, we've been able to, through these grants, the school-based mental health grant, really enhance our assessment and evaluation processes and tools that quite honestly were outdated. And we didn't have the most up to date assistance. Our staff to be providing to our students to really truly understand how to learn and help the teachers understand how to teach more effectively and support them. So this, again, it would provide for five more school psychologists to go through the program. And they've really felt built as like a little cohort amongst, amongst the group and sharing. We created a contract as well as if you go into, go into a program, you have to stay in the district for at least three years. So we kind of really thought through, like, this is a big investment. And we want to then bring it back to be able to enhance our systems abroad and school psychological services. It's also a recruitment and retention strategy as well. We were able to recruit three school psychologists with various incentives, but this was a big one, that they would be able to enhance their, their skills and capabilities.
Interesting.
Actually, yes, I've got a couple of questions. This is a two-part question. In terms of neuropsychological evaluations within the district, what would a student expect in that type of assessment or procedure? What, what they, you know, expect of a type of test? And also, it's my understanding that this type of test could also produce a level of anxiety in themselves. So how will the district try to manage that component as well?
So it's a, it's not a medical, so like a clinical neuropsychological evaluation would be different. So that would be going to like the Children's Neurological Development Center. This is really being able to look at learning disabilities and learning styles much more directly and utilize the tools, the assessment tools. So it's, it's, it's an extension of the tools that we've had that are more culturally, holistically and targeted at learning styles. And so it would still be this similar that you're sitting with a school psychologist. We now have iPads versus the old school kits and paper protocols and going through various different activities that measure the cognitive skills. It just, they're much more advanced assessments. First, we can use like the WISP, for instance, it's a, it's an assessment we used for a very long time. But the norms and the protocols were created in like the T V, right? So we have more assessments through this program. They also, it does take longer because you're gonna be doing maybe longer pieces of assessment or more activities to measure additional cognitive skills. So it wouldn't, I wouldn't say it's like you're going to a hospital setting and you're engaging in any extraneous activities. It's still, exactly, yeah. It's just more, and probably more activities that are more visually, visual versus like me just sitting and talking at you. But really looking at the different cognitive abilities, yeah.
The only question I have is, the, this, five psychologists, and if the first two makes six thousand each and the other one twenty-five hundred?
Yes, that is, I don't know, I think there must be something where I hit. But I'm gonna be on every one. So we, last year, originally, we had eleven school psychologists going up. And two out of four of them actually dropped the program. Which was why we put that contract in place. And then two of them, one had a baby and could not finish. And the other had some personal situations, but they wanted to continue the program. And so that is the continuation fee for those two people to finish the program.
It's like the contract type also says.
Yeah, she just struggled. I may have to fix that.
I assume it's new?
Well, now I'm wondering, maybe we did have one last year, so I don't know. I knew it, yeah.
Okay, thanks for that clarification. Any other question? Can we recommend this for? So, move.
Second.
Second, all in favor? Any abstention, any opposition, rise, thank you so much.
Thank you.
You stay. Four point.
Yes, I'll do four point three, which is presence learning. So presence learning is an online specialized services platform. They've been doing virtual services before COVID even hit. And we're doing evaluation services. And in some very small districts, they actually manage their entire specialized, like a lot of rural areas. So this particular contract would be to support our pre-K department. So we have played a few evaluations. So right now, we're getting high numbers of students that are being screened and referred. Many of these students did not receive early intervention because it was during COVID. So we're starting to see those students come in with very significant needs. Most of the evaluations that we are asked in preschool to conduct are all around speech. However, also we do a lot of cognitive and educational also with that. So to support, because two of our highest need positions that are really hard to hire, even though Human Resources did a great job this year, we did hire probably the most speech and language pathologists I've seen since I've been in this role. We have, you know, hired a few additional school social workers, one particularly assigned to the department. So we are making progress and we're really excited with that. Psychologist, sorry, thank you. So really excited about that. Even with those additions, we still have quite a few of a backlog of evaluations. So in this contract, what we are asking is for your approval for $294,000. And what that would mean is that we would concentrate this most quality preschool. We would have speech evaluations. They would also do speech, they would also do the services, they would attend the meetings. And plus, we're working in partnership with them. And then we would also have educational or cognitive only evaluations for that. We would not contract them for those services. So you might say, how are you gonna get a three-year-old to do an evaluation virtually? So they've been doing this for many, many years. And what we do is we hire a support person. We have TA that will stay with the student as the evaluation. So the family will still bring the child here and they'll be evaluated, you know, here with us with our support team member virtual. Will it be for every child? No. We wouldn't want to have, you know, our students with high needs that got autism serious. They just wouldn't be able to sit through that kind of service. So we will be very, we will think really hard and make decisions about who we would want to refer to have those, you know, those services and who we would want to have those evaluations. This is something very new for us. We've never had, you know, we've done virtual services, but we've never had evaluations. So, you know, obviously we have worked with the team, you know, the pre-K team and working with the company and, you know, helping them understand our process, understand all of our paperwork. And so that way they're really a member of our team. So this is a brand-new contract for us and we're really, you know, excited. And, you know, hopefully we can start to really get caught up with our pre-K evaluations because we, we do have quite a few that we're backlogged with, so. And I want to make sure we're getting those done on time, so that way we can be placing and giving kids services.
This is for preschool?
This is strictly for preschool. So we do have it in the contract that if we wanted to, if we got, you know, by December, we were all caught up, which I hope I can report, you know, we could open it up to our K-12. So we do have that option. The company does have, you know, preschool to, you know, older students. So we, we could, you know, options.
So should we make that decision? Are we gonna, is that gonna change the cost interpretation or?
No, it's all the same. Yeah, they don't charge differently for like if it's a pre-K or a first grader because the, you know, the, the assessments they use might be different, but it'll still be like evaluation services. And they even will provide services like during the school day. So like some of the services we use now, they'll do them like in meetings when it's convenient for families. Like they'll actually do it in the school day, so that way while that child's in school, so, you know, it'll, it'll be easy. Or if they're pre-K and they're not here, if they're three or four, they're home, they could do it, you know, when the parent says they will. That's possible. And they also have bilingual evaluators, which is great, yeah. That's also something that, you know, it's hard enough to find, you know, speech and language and school psychologists and, you know, and when we can find a bilingual, I mean, it's even better.
Any question?
All my questions are answered before my presentation.
See, I, I, I know now.
Do we have a motion to recommend?
So.
Second, all in favor? Any abstention in the position of the highest? Thank you so much. So we can move to.
Uh, nope, we have four point four, which is Sheen's.
Oh, Sheen.
Sheen's Office Interiors. So I am really excited about this. So this is actually a purchase. And the best way that I can do it is to actually model it for you, so you can understand. So what we are doing is we are asking you to purchase what we call sensory notes. And I'm gonna give you an example. This is what they look like when they're playing. This is what they look like when PTSD, oh, sorry, when PTSD, they see them, they see them. When, when PTSD actually designed with the company. And so what we're looking is, we're going to do these for one at every elementary and middle school. And I'll show you the middle schools because they just can't be that pretty, as you know. So let me go through them. So basically what these are is, these are workspaces where either one or two groups of students or a small group can come in. As you know, you know, we've had a really high number of students who we are seeing that are coming in with, you know, a lot of anxiety. We do two SCL mental health assessments each year and we see that the results of that show students that are having higher levels of anxiety. This is a great way when a student is becoming very overwhelmed, they can come here and kind of re-center and calm themselves. And so here what you see is it opens up where it has seats and then a table. So if they wanted to bring this, an outlet so they could come in and maybe, you know, plug in their computer, do, you know, some kind of online quiz or, you know, program, you know, we have iReddy. You can do some of those there in the nook. Or what this also does is this table can come down. So sometimes we have, you know, our older kids will want to sit, but our little ones, sometimes they just have to stretch out and move. And so we made it where these will come down, the seats will go up. And then if you notice here at the bottom, there's a mat because we don't want anyone to get hurt. And so sometimes when they're in that state, they're, you know, a little fidgety. So they would, they would go in, you know, on the mat and they could, you know, kind of re-center. Now, it has a lot of cool things, so it will have LED lighting. Now, it has a lot of cool things, so it will have LED lighting. I didn't do the smell, I wanted to, but I didn't, it was a lot more. But it has like a little twinkle carpet in the back. It also has like a whiteboard, so like if they wanted to do some math, because even a teacher, you know, one of our specialized teachers could go in there with them and do a little lesson. Then we purchased these, they're called fiber optic tails. And, you know, sometimes kids need that sensory piece, so they can breathe them, you know, kind of play with them. So, you know, as they're trying to, you know, calm their bodies down. So this, and then, oh, and then the seats are vibrating. So sometimes that kind of helps because they need the motion, so the seats vibrate. So that's the element.
Why is it from?
Um, it's, I think it was. It, it's some things are happening. Yes, and it's, it's like.
This is going to be, they're going to be like, I ain't getting in that, it's a boy.
Well, the, well, I'll show you.
It's alright.
Sandy, I believe the lighting can also adjust.
Yes, it does, all different colors.
Yeah. Creativity through.
Pretty like psychedelic. I, I feel like I'm going to find more like adults than this little pod.
No, you won't.
I agree. So now the middle school, because we know that the middle school don't want to be treated like, you know, have anything that's, you know, too flashy. So for them, they have very similar again, so they'll have the outlets they can plug in, they'll have their table. We didn't do the removable pads on this one, just because they're not going to be rolling around on the floor. So they would just have, you know, seats, so they have pretty much everything else. They'll have the LED lights, they'll have the twinkle back, they'll have the whiteboards. And the good news is that these are all on wheels. So I'm letting the schools decide where they want to put them. I'm recommending, some of our schools have calming rooms. So they already have, you know, kind of some sensory rooms where kids can go and they, you know, need to, you know, take a break. And so this is a great addition to that. Some schools might choose to put them in a high, you know, traffic area, like some schools might say, I want to do it on the first floor. As long as we're not, you know, doing any fire codes or needing fire codes, but they might choose to do that. And it is on wheels, so they're able to, you know, move it. Where Shein comes in, we are, this is a feedback to an MPA that Ryan did. And so what they've done is they've really helped support me in designing these for PTSD. But they will also build them for us and deliver them and show the school teams how to utilize it. Because as you can see, there's a lot of those businesses there. So that's where they come in to help us support that. So they will build the units and they're pretty large. So they'll build those units in their warehouse and then deliver them. In any school that doesn't have an elevator, they'll build them right in the school.
And it's the installation class?
That's what that is, yes. So that's, yep, so you'll see roughly the pods are about thirteen thousand dollars each for elementary and then middle school is ten thousand. You see the option, the fiber optic tails, those were an extra piece we had, we, we didn't have to, but I wanted to add it. We added, and then you see the freight to the warehouse and then the installation. That's what that is.
I, I, I definitely did some, some research on this. First, because, well, on all the contracts, they said we ought to do our due diligence on these kind of things, so. I definitely looked, and then I was excited to hear about it, but I did in fact look at the contract and I went on the website. Seems to be a bit of some inflated prices on here. Only reason why I say that is because it says the highest cost on the NOOK sensory pod is about eighty-two, eighty-two hundred. But we listed it's about twelve, a little bit over twelve.
Twelve-three-three, yeah.
Then after elementary school, it says about ten thousand five hundred for sort of middle schools and elementary schools. Which is a four thousand dollars to twenty-three, yeah, twenty-three hundred dollar difference respectfully. So the price kind of is inflated in sort of seventy-three, seventy-three thousand dollars for elementary and middle schools, sixteen thousand for middle schools. So that's sort of roughly ninety-two thousand dollar difference than what the website is saying. So I just want.
Was it just the base model? Because we, we put a lot of bells and whistles on it and it might have just been the base model when you were looking at it. Because we added like the, because I also added the removable, you know, because it comes with, you know, I think it comes based with the benches. But then I wanted it where it could be removable, we could put a pad in there for, you know, like pre-K, K. So I think that's why we added that. Plus we also added the tails, that's a little more. So, you know, the vibrating scene, so I think there's all, like, you know, because there's just a plain base model, which is just, you know, plain. Kind of like the shell of it and then like anything else, then you add more things. Like if I wanted the smelly fragrance with it shoots up smell, scents, that would have cost more too.
Correct, correct.
Yeah.
Okay, and then for the installation, because I have for them, because I did in fact call them as well, they said it's about two to four hundred in installation. Does that price go up because of sort of the add-ons that you sort of added on?
Um, that's a good question. I'm not sure, but I'm thinking probably because that'd be more things that they would have to add when they were building it, right?
Okay.
Yeah, and just so you know, we did work, so Shein, we would meet together as a team, so it was Shein, myself and somebody from the NOOK. So the website you went to, Mrs. Eaton, it was a representative right from there.
Correct, correct.
That worked with us, so.
I went on that, too, I went on to the document of education referring to master plan, MPA five-seven-three, and I could not find that on the website. I didn't know, you know, if there's some way you could screen it online, so I can just take a look, or if I overlooked it. Because I was questioning that myself.
I'm going to defer that one, because I think that was. I was wondering if Toby was MPA.
Yeah, when I searched for it, it came up.
Did it come right up?
No, is it? Furnishings and Equipment?
Yes, that's probably, yep. Say that, I'm sorry, say that again.
Furnishings and Equipment. MPA five-seven-three, Furnish, Furnishings and Equipment Company for statewide real estate efficiency progress. And then I looked down and I see Shein.
Yeah, that's it.
I must have looked, it didn't come up for me at all when I did a research on it, but that's great, I didn't say it. And then now part of this vendor is part of this agreement with this purchase.
Yes, yes.
I just want to say, so because of what I found and I do understand sort of the add-ons and the add-ons really isn't really within the contract. And I got to go by what I see on the website and then have. Me personally, this is something that I definitely want in our schools, but because it is in fact a ninety-two thousand dollar difference. Me personally, I don't think that I'm going to sort of vote on this for favor of it, because the money sort of isn't right. And I don't have enough information to know exactly what those add-ons were, so. Well, you told me, but there's not a lot of documentation to sort of back that up. So me personally, I'm not, I'm for it, but just because of the lack of information, I, and it's a ninety-two thousand dollar difference. I am in fact going to take a step back on voting for this right now. But yes, definitely something that I can do.
I mean, what I could do is, because we work directly with NOOK, which is, I think, the website, you and I see, it's the same vendor. What I can do is have them cost break down for us, like each of the different things that we did. So that way you can, you know, like, so when they tell us that it's. Twelve.
Twelve thousand.
Twelve thousand three hundred thirty-seven. What I can do is have them break down what that means for all of the different add-ons we did, because you can even see the difference. How much was the one you saw on Mrs. Eaton's?
It was about eighty-two.
Okay, because the middle school one is less and as you saw in the picture, it's not as intricate as the other one. But we did put, like, we put the power and the USB, like, so we did put some things in there. So I can have them break out what each item costs for each of those add-ons. They did it when they submitted the proposal, they just kind of lumped it and said NOOK including. And then they listed all of those items and then gave us the price. But I can have them break it down for each of the.
That would be important.
That would be, I mean, like.
Would you be able to have that?
I see an amount.
They've been really, really good, they think we'll give it to me by tomorrow. You, because it does have, like, it does break down the fiber optic tails that they do. They did work that, that down, that was like thirteen hun, uh, one thousand three hundred and seventy dollars a piece. And then for all of them, because we purchased twenty, it was like thirteen thousand. So I could just have them do all of these days.
Alright, would you be able to have that for us by next Wednesday, the board meeting?
Oh, I can, they're really good, I'll have them work on it and probably give it to you by Friday.
Got it.
Sure, and I'll tell them to compare it to the one that was on the website.
Thank you.
Look, I've got one other question regarding the pod itself. I think it's important for mental health for the students to quell anxieties. It seems like a great, you know, type of, you know, specialized, specialized classroom.
Yes, special autism, a lot of autism classrooms have these.
But how long would a child be in one of these type of pods? How long would it be, fifty-minute intervals, thirty-minute, hour?
That's hard to say, it's going to depend how long that student takes to regulate themselves. So, you know, I, that'd be kind of hard, to say like, you know, a half hour, an hour. And one of the things that, you know, in the guidance that I shared with principals to start thinking about is, like, what's your procedures and your protocols going to be around using the pod? Because, you know, everyone's going to want to go in the pod, so, you know, so, and teachers are going to want to recommend kids to go in the pod. So like, what, you know, what are, you know, how are you going to utilize this in your building? I know Debate had one.
Debate, Debate and.
Yeah, and Spaziano had one, and I know Debate had it in Calgora, right, when they were renting the space or being in the space. Right, Steph, didn't they have, when they were in the space with Laurel, they had a.
They had a, yeah, they had a sample model at, at Laurel when they were there. And they were able to, you know, see it in action with the kids, with the teachers, being able to like rotate and see how that enhances their, their work with the kids. So they were able to experience.
Now, you're actually, principals can give you that information, what you did say, thinking, or you just?
We just shared it with them, yeah, I just wanted them to start thinking about it, because, you know, these are big units. And I didn't want them to be delivered and be like, hello. So I wanted them to really think about, like, where is the best place? Who would be, you know, the best people to get trained when they got the unit? And just how would you utilize it? So that way, prior to that, you know, they'll have to be, obviously, you know, training with, I don't think training so much with teachers per se and how to use it. But just like, this is what you choose for, this is when you use it. The, so Shein, what they'll do is they'll provide just like the actual pod and show them how to use it. And like, you know, how to turn on the lights and how to, you like, do all the, you know, find the vibrating chair and like all that stuff. But then it'll be up to the schools to determine what's the best way for them to utilize it. And the reason why I didn't want to dictate that to them is because every school has some, you know, different nuances. And so I wanted them to be able to have, stay in that, yeah.
Is there a national average of that, like how many other, you know, children have utilized it and?
It's utilized a lot with our autism classrooms, a lot of autism classrooms have one of these right in their room. As far as like for an entire school community, I'm not sure. And I, I would defer to South, because South has gone to a lot of the newer schools and.
For the new school in Cranston. Eden Park, so Eden Park has these in each of the learning communities that they have. And students actually rotate and, you know, students who need, just, you know, who have like different needs or different pitching. So they actually do some of the project-based learning inside the pod. So it's very, it's very creative in the way that they integrate into the daily activities. And that's one of the, like, close by to school districts that we actually learn from. You know, Debate is doing that sort of model programming as well. So they've been very closely utilizing that as part of their professional development. And it's very unique in the sense that, you know, students who require just a different way of like learning or have or need more, you know, sort of like individual space or have the ability to, you know, listen to music while they're doing some of the project-based learning and just need a different way of lighting. So they use it a lot, because it's also, like, Sandy, I think you added this, the whiteboard.
Yes.
It's a readable surface, so they do, you know, mini lessons, pull them out. And so it gets utilized in very different ways to sort of, you know, get to the child and provide what they need.
What's the safety protocol for?
It's all padded.
It's, in, in the, in the unit itself.
No, I'm saying, so it's not going to be in the classroom, most likely in the hallway, correct?
So someone would have to, that's why when they do that, they'd have to have a procedure of like, who's going to be the adult that's in there with them? Like, because we wouldn't, we wouldn't.
So it's not going to be students by themselves?
No, 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 they have to be super good.
And Debate, because it's a learning community, literally, like, you actually, the pod is right there, you're teaching over here, you can see, there's visibility in each of the, in each of the floors where they have one of these. And although it's mobile on wheels, like it's secured in the sense like you really can't just like wheel it down the hallway, you know what I mean? Like it has, it requires like some manpower and it has some safety, safety features in that, in that way.
No, that's why we got that special pod.
Your, your NOOK also is, is it accessible for students?
So we, so that's.
Is that something that you?
Where, yes, so one of the things.
I think that influenced the cost.
Yeah, so one of the things we're also looking at is on ADA, because we do have some of our, you know, students who have wheelchairs. And I want them to be able to access it, because it kind of does have, like, the, I guess the, the bottom part could come out. But I want a very specific one, so that our wheelchairs can go inside. And so they're looking at that right now and kind of, they have one to design, because they also want to have some of those really fun things in them too. So what we're doing is we didn't purchase any of those, go ahead a little bit. We didn't purchase any of those right now, but we did put in for a grant, matter of fact, out of Gero, this alley with Brian. And so if that gets accepted, then we'll be able, I've already talked to them that we can get some ADA ones. So pretty much it's the shell and the student can wheel right inside, yeah, yeah, right, right inside. So that's going to be, if you review, then that would be our next, next question.
So I think that work we're looking at is another for us to make a informed decision. We want to. Especially having, you know, try to, to, to the internet and see that these discrepancies are maybe something that's not, that's not. So we will be, if we're able to get that information set up at this point, this causes next week, we will have the whole body of it. There's no doubt that this is something that is, that we want to, but we just want to make sure that we do our technicals on it. So the earlier you give us that information, the better for us. I just want to suggest that we move it out of finance, subject to that, if my colleagues are in agreement with this. Push it out of finance, but to, for, for the full body of you.
I would recommend it.
I'm going to still abstain by, in the forward, forward.
So we have I am for it, so in favor?
I.
I am I, and then two in favor and one to send it. So just get us this information and send it to you, and she then send it to the pod.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
As for student of what services? Sorry.
Sonic Control. Sure, Chris, you said you're director of finance, you have a team, for who is happy to present the Sonic Control contract in front of you. This is unique because this is usually on the services materials list that is presented to you in June or beginning of.
Sorry, sorry. Four point. Four point nine.
One nine. Oh, okay, got it, got it, got it.
Right.
So I'm sorry.
So historically, you would see this as a renewal contract that's on the materials and services list that we present to you in May or June for services to begin in, start of July to June. This was in the brand left off that list, so just in case of transparency, I'll bring in this to you for your consideration and approval. So Sonic Control does our monthly monitoring services for all of our buildings. And they also do repairs to the equipment that is existing. Ask you any questions?
Well, I do in fact have a question. You seem to know information for us to sort of get anything sort of based it on, have no information.
As far as, so I'm sorry, I don't know, so the first page is, the cost of the monthly rate is thirty-three thousand five hundred dollars per month for the monitoring? I'm sorry, I'm sorry, excuse me. Thirty-three five hundred is the estimated cost of maintenance for any, anything that appears. And then the second, the two seventy-five was eleven. Two hundred seventy-five thousand one hundred and twelve is.
No, no, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, you don't have that?
No.
I can make a copy and say that extension on three hundred and eight dollars.
Yeah, we don't have no text to sort of base this contract on, this is a lot of money.
Well, this is a renewal.
Not a renewal. Not right now.
We should, I know, but we should still probably have some kind of information, just in case we don't like the renewal, we want to go somewhere else, someone else.
And and it's actually not, we know it's extension, right? Because that's what you're checking here. Some extension.
Yeah, we, this is, I'm assuming an option, you're an essential of existing contract that does all the security monitoring.
Correct. So this is what we pay every year?
Alright.
But that, that monthly part of it, you just mentioned, we don't have anything here, or do you have nothing?
I don't have any skeleton.
Yes, Scott, I'm sorry, I didn't know that it wasn't attached, Scott's making a copy to you and showing you, you know, breakdown is per uh for the year for the monitoring. And the estimated cost for all.
So monitoring, maintenance, and services for all students.
Question?
It's more of a comment and a question, but the research that I've conducted on this particular company. Seems to get poor reviews on their business practices. Also citing issues with malfunctioning equipment and no-shows from service calls, from the technical end of it. Most of the complaints were generated from customers out on the West Coast. But what really consorging was a notation about the wiring. It's not compatible with traditional systems. And there were some workplace safety and health violations with OSHA that I also discovered. So I will be attaining a vote on this particular contract.
I I just hope we had some kind of information to base it off of, so we can approve it. We don't have enough information to approve it, even though we're sort of renewing it, we're not, yeah, renewing it and extending it. The thing is though, there's no information really based upon. There's nothing I can sort of base this information on. Whether it's going well, what's going well with it, what's the concerns, any improvement you want to make, there's really no doubt that.
So I want to get some understanding, so the way they usually work in this district is that uh they just come and give us a deal every year. They just give us an invoice every year, and how do we know what the invoice is on? If I understand, I mean.
So, yeah, so the way the contract that is broken out is, there's a monthly cost for monitoring services. And then there is an estimated cost, which you see is thirty-three thousand five hundred, which is based on historical repairs to equipment that's currently in each building. We, South Dean, receives a request from a school if a camera is broken, um, for instance, or a DVR is, is, is broken. The vendors uh dispatch that location, they give us an estimate or a quote for to replace those devices. Uh replace those uh equipment, and then we, as a district, approve or deny those.
They also handle all of our access control in the system in in our schools, so just like all the badges that are programmed for students, uh for teachers and staff to be able to access. Buildings that's handled through them, any um alarm or monitoring services. So Sonic Control has different, different like franchises and different like, as a company, right? So we deal directly with um the one that's out of, based out of Rhode Island in Connecticut, and they handle sort of like the, the new England area. Uh so the district is, my understanding, the district's been using this for years as, as one. Yeah, as the service provider for all of those components, right? Um so anytime there's a camera that's down, that may not be able to be repaired or replaced, they, you know, any service to wiring. We've, we've never had issues with, so those sort of issues that you have uh shared uh in the, in, at the district.
Yeah, I believe that each, I mean, I could mispeak, I think that each uh, they're all independently owned. So it's not, it's not a, a, a company that, you know, they're all independent companies. From a principal perspective, they're always on point, so we call them, they were, they were there, own, own business.
I agree too.
And I understand that as well, maybe on point, but the thing is, there's nothing in these boxes for us to sort of look at. Every other contract has information filled, there's nothing.
Totally, totally understand, so historically, you wouldn't even see this in this format, it would be on the materials and services list, that is three pages long. That would say renewal of Sonic Control, just like you would see, Sa- Skyward, Power School, um L-Suite Number. Um and all the other small, all the other vendors that, that are approved in the uh fashion of three years or five years, or whatever we approve those. We go back and ask you to approve that dollar amount per year that's on those materials and services list. This was in Britain left off, that is why we pursue this fashion.
How many years have we had this?
So, Sonic Control as a company?
Yes.
They've been monitoring our security, I would say, I've been here, I've been here for twenty-three years, so I don't think that there's nothing.
How can y'all said that? No, that's good to know, because then I, I really do have some concerns.
So historically, yes, and then we would go, when their contract expires, we would go up to bid, and they would be the lowest qualified bidder. So then it's a constant renewal for them to, to monitoring those devices.
When does their contract expire?
So I think this is the last renewal, if you will, for this, this service. So we will be going out for an RFP for these, for continuing services. And it's as a district, we can decide whether or not we're changing our security platform to go differently. And that's something that we have to consider as a district to do that, knowing that it will be potentially costly to replace those devices. Or to see if they're even compatible for an other company to monitoring, monitoring the services.
Okay, but I, I definitely want to acknowledge, my colleague said there was sort of some concerns based upon the contract. A lot of you were saying that you don't really see as many concerns, but all we got to do is put the news out. We had so many different sort of situations that took place, even during me being a student, recently, from the school department. We've had pistol wets, we've had people walk into schools, uh not be able to sort of identify certain individuals. So there is in fact concerns with this contract. So when she says that there is concerns, I would have hoped that a lot of the educators that's been principals say, well, yeah, I do want to understand. There had, in fact, has been sort of concerns with this. Um and then like I said, there's still, I, for a contract over three hundred.